All right. All right, we're ready to begin.
Well, it's Thursday, August tenth at six o'clock and I'm call this Lacey City Council work session to order. We do have a amended agenda I am this evening. We're gonna be adding. Agenda I M A the SO six. Water rights exploratory drilling bid award to tonight's agenda. I know we usually don't. What?
Well. It's an amended agenda.
It's on the amended agenda. It didn't go out originally last week. They added it. It should be on all of our agenda, but we still need to adopt the amended agenda.
Move to approve the amended agenda, yes.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? And CNN and all in favor signify by saying aye. Sir, anyone opposed?
misunderstood that you're heading it again.
The amended agenda has been unanimously approved. Just for the public's sake, we have council member Steadman is online will join us today and the deputy mayor is an excused absence and is out of the state at the moment. But with that, we'll go right into our amended agenda, which is this water rights exploratory drilling bid award. And we'll hear a little bit more about that.
God, again goes, I just want to just mention, as you started to mention earlier. Typically, we don't have action items on a work session night. However, the council can take action on on. Items at their work sessions, but it's not typical stance. In this circumstance, we're looking at a timeframe for an existing negotiated agreement for construction. We spent on the property. And so now we'll go over this this. Bid request or. Approval of a bid request so that we can keep the timeline and not have to go back into an extension of that construction easement. So with that, I'll turn it over.
Evening, respected council members. So I'm one of the trade engineers, project managers on. It's source six exploratory drilling. Water is. The staff is recommended recommending council award the contract of the books. Twenty twenty two dash thirty three towards six water rights exploratory drilling. Of a board to the low bidder Malcolm drilling. And we received three bids. So the low bidder was Malcolm drilling and. So part of this and. The there are any working days in this project and. Work is expected to begin in the middle of September next month. And part of this project is we are wanting to complete three exploratory bore holes. One on our city of Lacy's Judd Hill parcel and two exploratory holes on. Private privately owned undeveloped parcel, which is owned by. Urbetta L Gray and we've already successfully negotiated a construction easement which expires. This December of this year, very first December this year. So it is a really time sensitive project. And. And we would also be developing those two exploratory bore holes into monitor wells. On Miss Grace parcel because we want to. Analyze the water quality, what kind of water we're gonna get. So that's that is what entails in this project. And this is the location of those two parcels. As you can see, the source six parcel, which is owned by City of Lacy, is at the southwest corner of this picture and the north you see is the grace parcel, which is currently undeveloped. As part of this project, we also successfully negotiated. An access easement from the neighbors Ronald Ferry's. Because as per Miss Grace wishes, we didn't wanna clear out the frontage of their undeveloped parcel. So we successfully negotiated an easement with Ron Perry. And we're gonna be, we actually developed their access as well. Frontage, we did some improvements to make sure you can. Have the equipment successfully entered the parcel from, you know, the other side of the untold parcel. And there'll be minimal clearing on Miss Grace parcel, which was also one of their wishes. And so.
So I know that. We've been talking about this for a while and she expressed concerns about. The trees coming down, so on, so forth. If we do exploratory drilling and it comes back that there's good water pressure, good quality here. Will we then need to get enter into negotiations to purchase? This as well.
Potentially that would be the case and we would begin negotiating new negotiations with property owners. And this is a typical monitoring well. It just shows your typical diagram of what actually is in a monitoring well.
So we're drilling three holes, all three on the grays. One on the gray's lot and then two on SO six.
The other way is say one on SO six parcel and.
Thank you.
So. Staff recommends so.
Or the little bitter. Well, is there any questions? Can I get a motion?
I would move that we award Lacey contract number PW twenty twenty two dash thirty three to Low Bitter Malcolm Drilling Co, Inc. From Kent, Washington, and the amount of four hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and sixty nine dollars and sixty two cents.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Question. So, you know, reading the staff report. There it seems that if there isn't, if that isn't a good source for us, what what's our alternative? So if we don't, you know, we don't find a good option here for a well.
So that would be a disadvantage for the city. If we are unable to find water, then the other option is moving out of. Quarter quarter section. Which is an area associated with the water right permit. But if we do that, if we don't find good water on. The parcel within the quarter section, then we're looking at potentially losing part of water rights because it's extremely expensive. To get a new water right out of that quarter section. And then you're also looking at potentially mitigation measures which. Are really expensive and.
So if there's not water in that quarter, in that area, then that water rate is tied to the area. So we'd have to get a new, if we had to go somewhere else, it's a new water.
And this permit expires in twenty thirty. And this is the third time we have actually asked ecology for extension. So. If. If we can't find water, then we're actually looking at potentially losing some of the water portions associated with this permit.
Do I mean, do we have any idea up there? I mean, until you drill the well, I guess you really don't have any idea if there's water there or not, right?
Has it been witch that long? Save you all a bunch of money.
The worst level of.
That's true. Well, we'll keep our fingers crossed. Council member Steadman, do you have anything to add?
Nothing on my.
Okay, then it's been moved in second and all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Council member Steadman? Anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries. Well, go to the low bidder and we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up to Shannon to talk about our meeting structure and and scheduled discussion.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council members. I am here to talk about our meeting processes and some efficiencies. And so I've got a slide deck to go over some of the items, but feel free to jump in and ask any questions you might have as we go through this process. Please don't hold your questions to the end. So just a little background on what we're gonna go over today is first of all. What we heard and then what we looked at and then focus on some of the things that we heard from the city council. Some of the things that we heard from the executive team and the project team as we look at some of these materials. An overview of the history and an environmental scan of our peer jurisdictions. And then also kind of a, just a little dive into what a lean six sigma project is. And what the domain process is, which we did for this particular project. And then take a look at potential alternatives. There are four alternatives that we'd like to just. Overview with you here tonight and get some feedback on. And then finally wrap it up by taking a look at meeting dates. So specifically looking at the calendar. So what we heard was to take a look at the city's legislative meetings, including the times, the type and the frequency. And this just aligned really well with my certified public manager program. And so I said, hey, this would be a really good project for us to take a look at and do a deep dive. And so it was a great timing. And so what we looked at, we looked at specifically committee meetings, work sessions and regular meetings. And so I want to highlight, we've got our committee meetings. They consist of three of seven council members, which I know you all are well aware of, but if you're listening online. And then we have our work sessions, which we are here tonight. There are seven of the seven council members. And typically, like the city manager mentioned, you don't take action at a work session, but you can take action. Most of the action occurs at the regular meeting, which is highlighted with the box, the red box where seven of the seven council members will take action. We also took a look at very limited pre and post meeting internal processes. And this was specifically in our city clerk's office as well as our public affairs office. But what I do want to mention is that there are a number of things that this project did not get the opportunity to look at. The scope would have been huge. So for example, taking a look at our staff meeting or staff reports, just as a an example. So every time we take something to the council, there's often a staff report. There's often a presentation. So we don't take into account any of the time that goes into making those types of materials between the different meetings. So there are some things that were certainly out of scope when we looked at this. So council feedback. What did we hear? So if you recall, we held interviews with most of the council members and we asked specifically six questions. And really, the bulk of what we were looking for came in questions three through six. So what did council members see as the value of committee meetings? What did council members see as the limitation of committee meetings? What kind of ideas did council members have for improving the city's legislative meeting structure? And then just general thoughts on the potential of moving away from committee meetings and looking at what that could look like, thinking about what that could look like. So what we heard and I'll go kind of question by question. So here is question number three, which the full question was describe the value you experience with committee meetings. And while we were talking value, I do want to highlight that some council members brought up some of the limitations that they saw. So out of the discussion, we heard, hey, there is oftentimes not as much value in the committee meetings as there are in other council meetings. The information that is provided can be redundant as well as inefficient because it's brought up in other types of meetings like work sessions. Regular meetings for report outs and then regular meetings for final action. And there was also non-uniform information dissemination of materials. We did hear some pros along with that, and that was really got time to focus with staff on items. It provided some insight on some council perspectives and it was a really good opportunity for informational only items to get in front of council. I'm gonna just stop my share here for a second. It looks like we might have a previous version of this particular presentation. So I'm gonna grab the most up to date one. Might have broken the computer over here. So I apologize for that. Right. Perfect. I will now share my screen here on Zoom. Apologize for that. All right. So when we were talking about the non-uniform information dissemination, just to provide a little bit of background of what we heard. So as you all are very familiar with our committee structure, we have three council members who attend a committee. And in this particular example, this is just an example, we've got our council member two is our mayor highlighted with the red box. And then council member six is highlighted in the gray box as the deputy mayor. So the council members who attend the committee get the information that is provided at that committee meeting. Whereas the council members in the gray box who are not in the committee meeting do not receive the information at that time. So what we have seen can happen in this type of setting is that the council members who get the information. We're able to kind of ask questions and have early insight onto particular topics. And then there are other council members who don't have that opportunity and get that information. So in this particular example, you can see council members four, five, six and seven. Have to follow up with various city staff with some questions they might have about a particular issue. And this can add significant time on both council member and staff time. That, you know, may have been prevented had all of the information been provided at the same time. So in this particular example, you see that adds up to one hour. This could be an hour, for example, for every agenda item and that would add up. This is just an example, though.
How often does that happen, though?
It it does happen. And that was something we heard from the feedback with council members is that sometimes they felt they had to go and reach out to staff members or the city manager for very specific information on projects.
That's gonna be a condition anyway, regardless of where we go. Follow up questions with. Department heads, that sort of thing. I think that's gonna be conducive to either way.
Yeah, unless you get into a situation where all the council is a part of all the information meetings, right, all the time.
Maybe.
Council member, I'm sure that's not gonna eliminate that completely. You're absolutely correct, but we did just want to highlight that that was some of what we heard was that the information wasn't provided uniformly to council members. So the second question we had is what limitations do you see with committee meetings, which some of this was already identified in the value? So it's gonna be a little bit repetitive here. I might need to put a lean process on my presentations. But you can see that non-uniform information dissemination. So what we were just talking about was one of the things that was brought up. So for example, this was one of the things that we heard, a lack of knowledge of what is presented at other committees. So just not knowing what's going on, which then leads to, well, I've got questions about a particular item. A lack of just general focus for committee meetings. Redundant and inefficient information being provided. So you can see, for example, over here, committees are redundant. Going back to the previous point, council members are missing information from other committees if they are not on them. And then also there was. Kind of tying into redundant and inefficient was that no substantive work was actually performed a lot of times in committee meetings. So for example, work that goes into committee meetings is duplicated before a final vote. Oh, for question five, what ideas do you have for improving the city's legislative meeting structure? We heard a couple of recommendations. One that was repeated on several occasions was to eliminate committees. The second was to allow committees to make more decisions. And then the third one was to repurpose committees as they currently exist. So just kind of as an example, you can see some of those coming out, eliminate committees, empower committees to make more meaningful decisions. Let's get rid of some committees. Yeah, absolutely.
So committees typically are three members.
So how would they have any legislative authority to make it?
That that's a really good council member. And typically what happens is that a decision or recommendation that comes out of a committee. Can go through the process as we have it currently set. Some other ways that other jurisdictions have approached it are items go on to consent agendas. And so that is something that. You know, we've been looking at as part of this process, but yes, they don't make the official final decision. It does come back.
It goes on a consent agenda. You have to pull it out of the consent agenda if you want to discuss it.
Yeah, in some cases, yes.
Yeah, and that's what the way Olympia does it a lot is where a lot of the bigger decisions. Everyday decisions or, you know, that would go through committee that. Got approval in committee with a good go on a consent agenda. And you can always pull it off the consent agenda if you want to talk about it, but that's that's how they do it.
With Olympia, it's a unanimous decision.
Yeah, if it's a unanimous decision.
So moving on to the last question, which was what are your thoughts on eliminating committee meetings, expanding work session meetings or potentially folding some other type of special meeting or other ideas? One of the kind of shortcomings that we heard is, hey, this is the only system we've ever experienced. We don't know what it's like outside of this. There were also concerns about getting information out to the public. And then concerns that any sort of change like this would make potentially longer work sessions. Some of the pros that we heard was that this would really simplify the schedule. It would reduce redundancy and it would lead to more uniform dissemination of information. Because the idea would be that all council members would have access to the same information at the same time and be able to be part of the conversations on those items.
Even though it would make, I mean, I see the issue with it making longer work sessions, but we'd be eliminating three hours of other meetings.
Well, council member, you just said my entire presentation, so I'm ready to wrap this up and take questions. No, but absolutely. That's something we want to highlight as part of this process. So after, you know, we heard the council member feedback, we also went to the executive team and also included our city clerk as part of this process. And you can look and see they look very studious. I am not giving them a quiz at this point in time. But we wanted to get some feedback from the executive team as well. And so one of the things we had them do was an exercise on what were their thoughts on the legislative process. And what you'll notice is we heard a lot of the same sentiments that we heard from. The council members, including that committee meetings were redundant and inefficient. There was a lack of purpose. There was non-uniform information dissemination. Time of meetings was also identified as potentially problematic, not only for staff, but for the public and future council members. And that there was value in providing informational only items to the city council. So you can see again, just some general thoughts that align up with this this brief overview. So common issues, looking at the two kind of major stakeholder groups was we found the process currently is redundant and time consuming. There is the non-uniform information dissemination. There's also a lack of awareness of what is presented to other committees. Something that was also brought up was that report outs on committees often occur too late. So after council members have already made a final decision on something or they're really abridged and you have to wait again for more information in a work session. We also heard that committee meetings could present a barrier to participation. So the time of the meetings, like I mentioned, were problematic. They're all in the morning. So the first one, I believe, starts at eight thirty and goes to noon. The number of meetings. So there are six additional meetings every month and that becomes, you know, typically, potentially problematic for members of the public who are trying to follow the policy item from the start to the very finish. And then finally, just the access issue for future council members and then members of the public having to follow and track all of these meetings. Some common values that we heard is that committee meetings provide the opportunity to receive detailed informational only items. There's also kind of a less formal opportunity to interact with some of the staff. You get to understand the kind of limited insight of two other council members as you're discussing items before they go to full council. And then also that there's just this worry that, hey, this is the only operating system we've been in and we don't know what it's like outside of what we're currently in. So from this, we wanted to do an even deeper dive and kind of learn a little bit more about some of the root causes. So some of the history of why we got here and kind of, again, what happens in other jurisdictions. So we decided to put on the stupid ear and jump on in. So I think I know you all are well aware of this, but this is very important in the findings. So just kind of an overview of our system of government. You all know that we have a council manager form of government. The other form of government is a mayor council form of government. So here, all seven council members have an equal vote. They vote on policy decisions and then those policy decisions get implemented by a chief executive officer and the city manager. Although what we found in our history in our deep dive is that the city of Lacy has not always been a council manager form of government. It actually changed in nineteen seventy three from mayor council, the council manager. What you can see on the left over here is resolution two hundred and forty three. Which is the mechanism that provided this change. And then what you see here on the right is just a general overview from MRFP of a comparison of mayor council and council manager. So I've highlighted a couple of them because it is important. So under the mayor council form of government, you can see that the mayor is the person who can propose the development of policies. They also implement the policies and there is a separation of power between the mayor and the council. Under the council manager form of government, it's it's different. The city manager is the one who does the recommendations on kind of policy development. And then once that is voted on by the city council, the implementation then falls on the city manager. And there's also a separation of politics from administration in this particular form of government.
Sure. So pre seventy three, was it was the mayor elected as the mayor also? Yes, it was. Okay.
Like the mayor and that was the basically the CEO. Like Tom Ward.
So in addition, in our kind of exploration of history, we also found that committees existed. They were established very early on in the history of the city. We can't pinpoint a specific date. But what we can see is that committees were established prior to this switch. So what you're seeing here on the left hand side is ordinance seventy five, which was passed in nineteen sixty eight. And it talks about creating a auditing committee. And then on the right hand side with resolution number one hundred and thirteen, it talks about creating a utilities committee. And this was adopted in nineteen seventy. So prior to the switch in government committees existed. Um, but what I will say is, once we have kind of information on committees after the switch to the council manager form of government. We have a lot more about just general information about what the committees looked like. And they have not always looked the same over time. They have changed quite frequently. So I know this is really small and I don't expect you all to read each one of these. But what I'm showing you here is in nineteen seventy four, there were four committees. There was transportation and utilities. General government, humanities and safety, and then finance and audit. This changed in nineteen seventy six. So two years later, you can see that two of the committees went away and got spread into four additional committees. So you still had your transportation utilities and your general government, but now you have a separation of budget and finance, public safety, humanities and special policies. This changed again two years later and you can see at this point in time, the last original committee standing was general government. The rest of them had changed from what we saw in nineteen seventy four with the addition of utilities and community development and transportation. So there were now five committees where there used to be six and previous to that four. This changed again a decade later in nineteen eighty eight. You can see again, some of the committees got rearranged and reconsolidated. And here in nineteen eighty eight, there are still five committees, but they look very different than what they had looked like in the previous rendition. In two thousand and one, it changed again. Now you can see the original committees are no longer there. There is not a single one of the original committees from nineteen seventy four that we have a record of. Now you've got transportation, you've got utilities. You've got community relations and public affairs, finance and economic development, and then general government and public safety. We might have a few more in here. So in two thousand and five, it didn't change. These committees stayed the same, but what happened was there was a transfer of responsibilities of land use specifically. From the general government and public safety committee to the finance and economic development committee. And then wrapping this all up in two thousand and eighteen, this wasn't, there was a change somewhere between two thousand and five and two thousand and eighteen. Yes, and there was no resolution that we could find associated with this, but what this did was it established the committees as we have them today. So.
And then create the land use committee.
Correct. So our current ones were established with at least codified in this resolution in two thousand and eighteen. So you see transportation, utilities, community relations and public affairs, finance and economic development, general government, public safety, land use and environment. So all of this goes to show is that committees have looked very different over time. They have changed. From the four committees that originally existed in nineteen seventy four after the switch in government to today's committees. So after doing that deep dive through history, we decided to take a look at what our peer jurisdictions were doing. And so I know you have seen this list before, but it is our peers from a hundred thousand to forty thousand. And there's twenty jurisdictions because we are also including the city of Lacy, which is highlighted here. So this table is going to be very small. So I don't expect you to read it because we're gonna go over more of these details broken out, but what this is showing is the municipality, the population. Whether the city is larger or smaller than the city of Lacy, which is highlighted here. What form of government, if it's council manager or mayor council, if they have committees, yes or no? If they, what their committees look like, if they have committees. How many committees they have? Um, how many committees they have, when those committees meet? And one thing I do want to point out here is that uh all of the committees outside of the city of Lacey, which are not listed here because we know our committees. Um, meet in the afternoon or evening. So you can see uh four thirty, five thirty, six thirty P M.
Lot of news on that column.
So to summarize, what we found was uh six of our twenty peer uh jurisdictions, ourselves included, have committees. So that is thirty percent. When you look at council manager forms of government, two of thirteen, fifteen percent have committees. So it is us and the city of Olympia that have committees under this form of government. Eleven of thirteen, eighty-five percent do not have committees. When you look at mayor council forms of government, uh you can see that uh those percentages increase. So four of six have committees. It is a smaller sample size, so sixty-six percent have committees. And two of six, thirty-three percent do not have committees. So what we found is the form of government was statistically significant, whether you were a council manager or a mayor council form of government.
Hmm, was Olympia once a mayor council on the government also?
Yep.
Perhaps a clue.
It it certainly.
These committees came from.
Correct. I mean, and when we're looking at the history, it certainly tells the tale of what we're saying, hey, what is the cause? When the start, it certainly seems like form of government might have played a role in them. So we did a kind of deeper dive into committees. So in looking at the jurisdictions that did have committees and we found that it actually looks different depending on the jurisdiction. So what I've highlighted here is the city of Redmond, which um has several committees. They have four of them, but they are all full city council. So that means every council member attends them and has the ability to ask questions and to move things along in the process. So they are uh very similar to our work sessions. So just as an example, I provided their schedule here and you can see committee of the whole Parks and uh environmental sustainability. Committee of the whole public safety and human services. And I'm highlighting the Parks and Environmental Sustainability where it lists all of uh the committee members, which are all of the council members.
Do they not have work sessions though?
Uh, yeah, so it looks a little bit different. Some of them might not have work sessions. In this case, yeah, I mean, these are effectively uh their work sessions. And then it goes to their regular meetings. Uh, the city of Edmonds was also a little bit different in that they had it in uh their their code. That council members are able to attend and actively participate in any committee. Um, although if you weren't assigned to the committee, you couldn't actively vote, but you were able to sit at the table, ask questions, get that information. And then the cities of Bellingham and Issaquah had a mix of both committees of the whole and then limited committees. So just to kind of look at this, it gets more nuanced of what committees look like. So going back to uh what I was saying earlier is that what we found is the form of government is statistically significant. So we're just showing what I just explained. So what we have here is council manager in blue and mayor council in red. And as you can see, the kind of outliers here uh in the the council manager that have committee meetings are ourself and the city of Olympia. And um you've got your mayor council here identified in the red as, yes, they have committee meetings. We also uh took a look similarly at size and what we found again was that that was significant. Um, so you can see here that if it's larger, uh you're more likely to not have uh committees. And if you were smaller, you are more likely to have committees. And then we took a look at the number of committees that each jurisdiction had. And so what we found was that the average number of committees that a city had was four point two. But again, keep in mind that some of these jurisdictions are effectively work sessions, right? So those committees of the whole. So you can see Lacey here has its six committees and all of the rest of the jurisdictions have have less. Uh, Redmond as an example, just going back to of that that committee of the whole. So we decided to go through a lean Six Sigma project on this and um we'll go over each of these elements in a little bit more detail. But you can see again, uh the executive team uh hard at work here going through this process. So the domain process, just really briefly, is a way to take a look at uh process improvements. Um, and really what you start with is defining, you know, what is the scope of the project? How are we going to move into measuring it, which is the M? And then the analyzing, which is the A. Uh, so it's really taking a look at testing uh root causes. And then focusing after you've done all of that at what could be improvements to the system. And then finally, if you were to make improvements, how could you control those types of improvements? So we did an exercise called eight wastes and this is basically a way to uh take a look at eight established forms of waste. And to see if there could be some elements of that in part of this process. So what we identified was uh defects, overproduction, waiting, non-utilized talent, transportation, inventory, motion and extra processing. And under each of these categories, we thought about, hey, how would this apply to this process that we're currently looking at? So just to give an example, um, under overproduction, this is briefly making more than what is necessary in real time. So thinking about this particular project, um, you know, there are multiple presentations oftentimes with a lot of the same information presented at various times. So are we overproducing our presentations, our staff reports and our uh report outs to uh the city council? Uh, similarly, non-utilized talent, so recognizing, yep, sorry, councilman.
Are you going to send your presentation out afterwards?
Absolutely.
I would like to read all of it.
Yep, yep, uh, well, I I'll absolutely send it out to you. Um, so non-utilized talent, so this is the underutilization of employees or lack of proper training. I don't think in this case it's the lack of proper training. What we identified was just more of. For example, we have staff members who attend uh various presentations uh multiple times and that time does add up. So we went through all of these wastes and I won't go over them uh here tonight because we'll, that would take us probably an hour or so. Uh, but we'll send it out so you can take a look through them. But we tried to identify what could be possible forms of waste in this current process. We also created a project charter um as part of this moving forward and a project team and identify what was going to be in the scope and what was going to be out of scope. So like I mentioned at the very beginning of this uh presentation, we had to really limit what we looked at. Because if you got into all of kind of the uh secondary elements, it could take a lot of time to review that data. We created uh what's called a sidepock diagram where you identify who your suppliers are. So for example, the city council is a supplier bringing kind of policy ideas and things to take a look at. But there are a lot of other suppliers in this process. We looked at our inputs. We looked at what were major steps in the process, what were some of the outputs that we put out? So for example, um, what you all are looking at with your agenda packets, the staff reports. And then finally, who were the customers? Who receives those outputs? So you know, you all read the agenda packets, members of the public read the agenda packets, the executive team. So it's really a good way to identify who is a part of this process. We also identified uh what's called a voice of the customer, which is who, who do you want to chat to? And talk about what they value and what maybe they see as shortcomings? And so as part of that, we identified, you know, city council and the executive team. And then uh we created a flow chart of the current process and I see council member Vasquez, you're like, that is way too small. So I tried to blow it up on the next slide, but I recognize it is still way too small. Um, but really what this is showing is a very simplified way of how a policy gets out to final action. And um while I said simplified, as you can see, it's not that simple. Um, so just briefly, and I I won't go over this uh completely, but you have an idea or policy. It goes to management review. So for example, it could be the city manager. It's determined to need council action and then it goes yes or no. Um, and then in the case of no, is there a value to present to council? You know, one of the things we heard was informational items are really important to get to council. So sometimes if there is a value, then yes. And so both of those yeses lead to what meeting? And from what meeting, you can see we've got the options of our committee meetings, our work sessions and our regular meetings. Um, but what we identified through this process is this is really where we need to take a look at. What meeting does something need to go to and why does it need to go to to that meeting? So you can see from committee meetings, work sessions and regular meetings, the flow chart continues. Um, and really it depends, does it need to eventually go to the full city council for action? And it will continue through this process with some additional steps. So I will send this out to you all so you can take a look through it, but this breaks down really briefly what the process is.
In reality, it can also, the missing step in there too, right? Because um it can go to planning commission. Or it can also go to commission on equity.
Yep.
Or youth council now as well. And so there's two other com- two other advisory boards that it can go through before it comes either to a work session or to full council.
Sure, there and there's a, there's a number of advisory boards, but we determined that is out of scope. We're just looking at committee meetings, work sessions and regular meetings, or else you would never see any of the fonts on uh this this table. Um, but yes, it's a good point.
There's also that loop back in the system of council, say, we want to go back and revisit this, or we want to go a different direction, and then it creates that loop as well and start over.
Yeah, this is a definitely a simplified version of the process, but focusing on what we determined should be in store. So then what we did was, um, you know, since we have gone to providing hybrid meetings, we're able to harvest a lot of really good data off of Zoom and YouTube. So what we were able to do was take a look at our council meetings uh that were held in two thousand and twenty-two and their average duration. Uh, so what I'm showing you here is committee meetings. I also included joint work sessions, which are not something that are, is part of the scope here. Regular council meetings, retreats, which again, retreats are not part of the scope and then work sessions. And so we were able to identify the total number of meetings in two thousand and twenty-two. The total duration of meetings in minutes in two thousand and twenty-two. And then what was the average duration of meeting minutes? So for example, if we're looking just generally across at uh committee meetings, we can see that the average uh committee meeting was about forty minutes. Although it really varies depending on the committee meeting itself. So for example, community relations and public affairs, the average was twenty-eight minutes. And if you look at finance and uh economic development, you can see that increases to about forty-seven minutes. Um, for regular council meetings and for work sessions, the, what I did want to point out is that at a hundred and eighteen minutes and a hundred and seven minutes respectively. Uh, that is actually less than two hours currently on average for our work sessions and regular meetings. So just to show this in another format, uh you can see here, the Lacey City Council meetings are about an hour and fifty-eight minutes on average. And then work sessions are about an hour and forty-six minutes on average. Uh, from there, we took a look at our committees and we looked at how many were actually held, out of how many were possible. And what we determined was the percentage that were held. And you can see that is again fluctuates based on the committee itself. But on average, when you calculate all of the meetings that were held, about three point six meetings per year were held. And then we also took a look at meetings canceled and then what the percentage cancel was. And then again, about two point four meetings uh annually were canceled. Moving from there, we did a dive into uh agenda items on committees and we categorized them as uh informational only. So these are items that did not require action by the full city council. It was more just to give an update. And then uh items that were for the full city uh council's consideration. And this would be items that were presented again in front of all of you. Um, and the items that were frequently repeated between a committee meeting and a work session. So just to give you an example of what this looks like, I'm showing you land use and environment, a snippet of it. And um you can see here, this first line, uh parking amendments, L M C sixteen seventy-two. That was introduced at a committee meeting and then eventually worked its way through the process until final action by the city council. So when we looked at the data, what we found is that there was a great variation between committees, between informational only items. And then items that were for full city council consideration. So this darker blue here on the bottom is informational only items. And the full city council consideration are the the teal up on the top. And so for general government, you can see about seventy-three percent was informational only and about twenty-seven percent was items that moved on. Conversely, when we're looking at land use committee, about thirty percent was informational only and seventy percent was items that moved on to the full council's consideration. So there is a uh variation between the committees.
Which makes a lot of sense because what we do is land use. Yeah, and of course, on the uh financial side, a lot of that is um really mandatory for us. And in fact, you know, there's stuff almost every month that um, it may be information only, but it's information that the council has to look at. And actually, um, um, the auditor's office, when you go through a financial audit and every year, um, um, I get interviewed at the beginning. And go through the process and it's that um finance committee. Um, information that basically I use to say that this council has. Um, um, you know, uh, is is directly looking at our finances on a regular basis. And without that information, we couldn't say that and we, I think we'd be in trouble. And so especially on the finance committee stuff, no matter how this all works out. Just three people or the full council, we will still, we'll have to continue to get the information on a monthly basis in order to be in compliance.
Look at that last chart, I think it was sixty percent of the stuff winds up going to full council.
Yep, so sixty-five.
Full council in the end anyway.
So based on this information, what we did um was some generalizations. So I do want to recognize that there are some broad strokes here in uh analyzing this data. But what we did was we took the committees and we took the total meeting count, the average meetings, the termination of what was informational only and what was full city council. Took the total minutes and then applied these percentages to the total minutes to try to determine uh how many minutes were informational only. And then how many minutes were full city council consideration. Uh, moving forward, we'll have a much better understanding of this type of data with civic clerk because it'll bookmark elements and so we'll know. But so this is something that is a little bit of a broad stroke here, but I think um is is helpful to take a look at this.
What are the value and waste determinations under those last two columns?
Great, great question, council member Cox. So just really quickly, so looking at um land use and environment, just as an example. It was about a total of uh two hundred and sixty-eight minutes. And so at thirty percent being uh informational only, we calculated that to be about a hundred and seven minutes. And seventy percent being uh full council consideration, that was a hundred and sixty-one minutes of the total minutes. So what we heard from our conversations again with this uh stakeholder group and the executive team. Was that the value was really in getting the informational only items. And some of the waste was hearing repetitive items that would then get repeated, whether at a future work session, council report out. Or a uh regular city council meeting for final action. So we determined that these would make um kind of good benchmarks to take a look as we did an analysis. So you can see the value is is about this nine hundred and fifty minutes of informational only. And then the waste is the repeated items at around seven hundred minutes. Again, recognizing that those items would go back in front of council at some other point. We also, like I mentioned earlier, took a just very uh limited look at city clerk and public affairs uh pre and post meeting items. And so what you're seeing is uh their uh work by kind of minutes per an average council meeting. So for example, uh going into an agenda creation, it on average took about forty minutes to put all the materials together and get that published. Um, publishing it, setting it up. Uh, one thing I do want to highlight is that we took attendance out. I know our city clerk is attending over here. Um, so we did want to take that out because we were going to make some staff assumptions later on and we didn't want to double count our our attendance. So what we identified was that if we can limit the number of opportunities for meeting setups and meeting minutes uh being created and agenda created. We could possibly create more capacity within our city clerks and public affairs offices. And then we took a look again at um some of those items when we put them at regular and work session meetings, committee meetings and canceled committee meetings. And the purpose of showing this slide just really briefly is to show that committee meetings, if they're not canceled, do require a lot of staff time. So uh in total, we anticipate that about a hundred and twenty-five hours or so of public affairs and city clerk staff time goes into uh committee meetings that are not canceled. Committee meetings that are canceled still require staff time as well. So if you cancel a meeting, um, on average, we think about twenty hours per year go into canceling committee meetings. So in total, um, that's about a hundred and forty-four hours of work or three point six weeks. That go just into committee meetings and scheduling committee meetings and getting materials out for uh committee meetings.
Good. If it doesn't happen, the committee meetings, it's going to have to happen someplace else. So where are you saving your time?
Well, we'll go over that in just a second. Yep, no, it's a good question. Um, we're just showing you kind of where we're at right now. So going back to uh the question that uh council member uh Cox asked was, we identified again the value being um. The informational only items and the waste being redundant information that has little to no value. So we uh took that into account and then we had to make some assumptions. So for the model, uh which Mr. Mayor, this is your question, how do we determine? We had to make a a few kind of assumptions. So number one, we determined that the average number of council members that attended a committee meeting was two and a half. Recognizing that not always are there a full uh committee meeting. The average number of staff members uh that attend each committee meetings is seven. This would include our city clerk staff as well as our executive team members who attend um and then members of staff who are presenting. Uh, moving on to work sessions and regular meetings, we assume that six and a half council members attended each meeting. We recognize again that it's not always the case that full council is here. And that an average of seven staff members attend uh work sessions and regular meetings. Just taking a real quick look around at our staff members here tonight and then recognizing that we have a couple online. There are twelve staff members here right now watching this presentation. And so we think some of our estimates are conservative when we're looking at this.
Yeah, I would think you're conservative on that, on the work session. Seven at committee meeting seems a little high.
Well, and council member, um, a lot of uh. Well, and council member, um, a lot of uh, the executive team and staff members are watching online for committee meetings. And so you might not see fully just in in chambers. Would, and that also doesn't take into account people going back and watching the materials after the meeting when they can. So do want to recognize that there are. Quite a bit of people watching those meetings from staff. We also uh, assume that two thousand and twenty-two represents an average number and distribution of meetings per year. So when we started looking at alternatives, um, some things to keep in mind is number one, that all informational only items continue. Albeit sometimes in different formats and we'll get into that. Um, all special meetings are informational only. So the idea is that no action is taken on those those evenings. And particularly an alternative one, which we'll get into more detail, informational only items are distributed seventy-five percent to work sessions. And twenty-five percent to regular meetings. So recognizing that some informational only items would come forward as part of a regular city council meeting. For example, uh, as part of a city manager report. So the four alternatives was alternative one, no committees expand work sessions and regular meetings. Alternative two, uh, no committees hold a special meeting every other month, which again would be informational only. Alternative three, no committees hold a special meeting monthly, that would be informational only. And then alternative four, consolidate to three committees rather than having the six committees. So what we did, um, and I won't go into all of the detail, but I'll provide this so you can do a deep dive in here. Was we took all of the data and information on meeting minutes that we had and we ran it through an analysis here. So what this is providing again is the information that I went over talking about all of the minutes, what our total duration of minutes were. What the total duration of minutes were, including two and a half council members and seven staff members for committee members. And then talking about the pre and post meeting, city clerk and public affairs, as well as if there were meeting cancellations for committee meetings. And we ran this through uh, this model and determined what the alternatives would be. So we identified again around, um, you know. Nine hundred or so minutes of informational only items. And so you can see here that is distributed in alternative four to consolidate to only three committees. The rest of the options do not have times for committees because they do not have committees. So uh, what this calculates is kind of what the current system is, and you can see total time expended in this again, council and staff. Um, looking at all of the meetings, we have a estimate of around uh, twenty-two thousand minutes. And when you look at the alternative four, because in alternatives one, two and three, there are no minutes, it's closer to twelve thousand minutes. We carried this on, uh, working through very similar data for our regular meetings and our work sessions, joint. And retreats don't change throughout any of this, so I do want to make a note of that. And again, what we were able to calculate was the current total duration and then what the duration would be in these alternatives. So as you can see for alternative one, again, taking into account that we are now just looking at informational only items, the total minutes does increase. However, it doesn't have any committee meetings when we uh, add the two up. But you can see what the total duration for our regular meetings and work sessions as well as our joint and. Special meetings as well for the options that include special meetings. So in this particular example here with special meetings, you can see that the time is the same because the idea would be you either have one every other month or you have one monthly. So. Uh, the duration will change, but the total number of information going to will remain the same. Uh, so we were able to apply that total duration to our assumptions of six and a half council members and seven staff. And then also our uh, city clerk and public affairs items and come up with a total time expended. So uh, Mr. Mayor, when you're looking at this, you can see that in the current, it's about uh, ninety thousand minutes. And this would expand based on the option to something potentially greater than what the current minute allocation is. However, you see the decrease because there are no committees in these particular options. So this is just for our our work sessions and regular meetings. We also wanted to make sure that we weren't counting um, report outs during regular meetings, double counting them. So we took those out of consideration and applied this to the model. So that's what this is showing you is us reducing those times. So now for these alternatives, because there are no committees, there are no report outs. So you can see that the reduction is larger than the current system. Report outs would presumably continue in this particular model. And then we were able to add all of this together. So all of this information with these assumptions and get a total time. So you can see our total time here, taking into account committee meetings and all other meetings, what the total number of hours are. What the difference in minutes and what the difference in hours. So you can see for alternative one, we estimate saving about two hundred and ten hours with our assumptions. Uh, per year, alternative two, a hundred and fifty-two hours, alternative three, ninety-four hours, and alternative four, a hundred and eighty-seven hours. You can see what the delta is uh, looking at this. So for example, alternative one would be a decrease of eleven and a half percent. Alternative two, eight point two percent, alternative three, five percent, and then alternative ten, uh, alternative four, ten percent. There is no alternative ten. Uh, thankfully. And then we were able to take a look at uh, our city clerk and public affairs time and find the delta there as well. And where you can see the biggest uh, savings in time would be with alternative one, which would be reducing it by twenty-two percent. Because you reduce the number of meetings, uh, agendas, packets and all of that that needs to go out. So that would be a significant reduction, whereas alternative four uh, would not have as significant of a reduction. Because there would still be more meetings than in the other uh, alternatives. So then we uh, just calculated what the average duration of meetings would look like during uh, these alternatives. And what we found was that yes, uh, regular meetings would slightly increase to about uh, two point one hours. And that work sessions would increase under alternative one to about two and a half hours. You see no change in alternatives two and three because this information is all provided in a special meeting. So there would be an addition of a special meeting for alternative two, because this was held every other month. The special meeting is about two and a half hours. And in alternative three, where they're held monthly, it is about an hour and twenty minutes. Because they are held at a higher frequency. And then here with alternative four, you can see that there's no impact on um, our regular meetings or work sessions because we do continue to have committee meetings. So I've got a table here that summarizes all of this. And so I'll hand out um, some of these materials, just so you can see this next step of this in a little bit more detail. And so this will start on page two, but this is again just summarizing all of the information that we went over, which includes the current um, status where we're at. And it provides what the total meetings are. What uh, if informational only items are presented to all of the city council, if information is provided uniformly. So you can see that depends on the alternatives. Uh, what the total meeting time is based on our analysis, what the total reduction time would be, what the reduction percentage would be. What the total reduction of city clerk and public affairs time would be, and then what we would anticipate would be the average duration of meetings moving forward with each of the options. Um, and so, you know, moving forward with these options, um, if we, if the council were to. Um, we do anticipate that it would increase capacity for council members, but also increase capacity for city staff to work on. Other identified city priorities. And so I just want to provide a very high level example of what that could look like. And I'm focusing specifically on the city clerk's office because we looked at data from the city clerk's office. So you know, if we were to reduce the number of public meetings, so one of the four alternatives. It would increase capacity for strategic initiatives such as document management system, recognizing that that is going to be a heavy records lift. That is going to be coming to our city clerks as well as other departments here moving forward. It could also include capacity for day-to-day operations, um, such as the increase in public records. So what we're showing you here is all of the city's public records. This includes PD as well as the rest of our departments. But what you can see is that the total number of requests is trending upwards and that the total time uh, to respond to these requests is also trending upwards. So uh, focusing uh, on alternative one here, uh, just a little bit more detail. And this is, uh, I believe page three of your packet. Um, this just provides all of the information that we went over, but what I want to highlight is what this could look like. So in this particular example, um, recognizing that meetings of work sessions would be a little bit longer. Uh, you could start earlier, for example, start at five thirty and go to seven thirty and eight respectively for regular meetings and work sessions. So you can see in this example of a monthly meeting schedule, regular meetings would start at five thirty and it would be anticipated that they'd be over on average around seven thirty. Work sessions would start at five thirty and be over around eight o'clock. Uh, going to alternative two, which is the next page of that packet, um, very similarly, just goes over the same information. Um, and it shows you what this could look like with uh, a regular meeting starting at the current time that we have. A work session starting at the same time we have, and then the special meeting that occurred every two months, potentially starting uh, earlier in this example at three o'clock. Because it is a longer meeting, uh, given that it is every other month. Um, and then that would go into a regular meeting at six o'clock. And then a work session the following, from six to eight o'clock. Moving on to alternative three, um, this is very similar to the last one, except for the fact that the special meeting would occur again once a month. So the time necessary to budget for that special meeting would be reduced by about an hour. And so instead of starting at three thirty, um, in this particular example, that special meeting starts at four thirty. And would happen on the third week of the month prior to a regular city council meeting with a little bit of a break in between. Um, alternative four, um, this is just an example of the consolidations of committees. And what we have here is each of the committees proceeds a regular meeting or work session for the first three weeks of the month. And then there would be no committee meeting on the fourth or fifth meetings of the month. Um, and so in this case, we have our committee meeting number one, starting at four thirty and going to five thirty. And then the council meeting starting at six and going to its duration.
Do we have a staff recommendation?
Yes, yes, and I am almost there, I promise. Um, and so fork, uh, alternative four, if you were to look at consolidating committees, what we found is that these might be some good options to consolidate to a public works, a general government, and then a finance and development committee. So the executive team, council member Kunkel, took this information.
In that option, in option four, are you thinking that the three committees would be all council members and they'd be whole committees of the whole?
Um, that was not anticipated. That is certainly something for discussion. Um, but the way the model works, it was not. It was um, a committee of three. So the, the executive team took a look at this information and uh, we worked on a few other um. Parts of the domain clean process. And so we did what was called um, force field analysis, also a pew matrix. And then finally, a preferred alternative um, option. So what we did was we had um, the executive team and city clerk identify what would be the top two choices to move forward with. And so what we found was the top preferred uh, alternative was alternative number one, which was no committees, expand work sessions and regular meetings. And you can see that this was not, not preferred by any of the executive team and received the highest of most preferred votes. And some of the comments we heard is that this is the most efficient, most streamlined um, way to get information. And it also saved the most time when you looked holistically at the process.
So nobody liked alternative four, huh?
Was that, was that hand? Sorry. Okay, great.
How about alternative ten?
Thankfully, that was not, that was not in there. Um, so council members, um, what we're hearing tonight is again, just to provide kind of an overview of this process. Um, get some feedback and also maybe get a little bit more direction on what next steps could look like for looking at these alternatives.
I understand what you, what you're doing here, um, and the assumptions that you've made. How this translates into real life, I think might be a little bit different. And the, and the reason why I say this is since I've, I've obviously been doing this for a long time. The, the committee meetings. Yeah, there's some redundancy. I think the, I really think the, maybe the biggest criticism is. That all the information doesn't get disseminated to all the council members at the same time. Um, I think that's may, maybe a legitimate um, argument. However. There is something to be said about being in a more of an informal situation where you're getting information. And you sort of talk it through at a committee level, and this happens all the time. You're like, it, you're presenting something, um, we, we sort of talk it through. And it gets shifted before it goes on to the full council for consideration to a work session, wherever. Uh, unfortunately, and. Under, again, rid the committees altogether, you're, you're sort of missing that opportunity to sort of. Go a little bit more of a deeper dive, le- less of a uh, a formal setting, um, and sort of. Massage something before it goes on to full council consideration. What, what I think was gonna, what's gonna happen. Under this is um, the information only still, still needs to happen because it's good information. The um, what, what, what being missed is for the, the council consideration. There is still, in order for something to get to council consideration, it has to be talked through. And looked at and sort of agreed upon. And that's when you catch. Something is usually at the committee level, or work, or, or maybe a work session level.
That, that's.
The work session level is the other.
Cause, yeah, as the second one is serving after you. I think the committees waste a lot of time, I do. Um. Because I don't think we accomplish a lot, half the committees, truthfully. We do, we do hash out some issues with things, but I think a work session is a better place to do that because all seven council members are there. The other thing is, I think that alternative one, which is the way I was, have been leaning on this. Is far more open to the public, right? When, I mean, we've been doing this a long time. There's virtually never, I mean, I, I can count on probably fingers of one hand how many times there's been a member of public. At a committee meeting. They, they just don't happen, right? They don't come, they're not watching them on Zoom, we're not seeing any, any of that. This, if we did it at a work session and then at council meeting, so alternative, alternative one. I think that's much more open to the public. I think that's just a much. More open government, you know, situation. And I think the work sessions are where you hash those things out. Cause I think all seven members should have an input on the things. If it's something important enough that we're discussing it at that level to really go get to the bottom of it. I think all, we should have all seven points of view, we have seven council members.
I just think that there, there has been times where before it even got to a work session. At the committee level, we sort of talked it through a little bit and it, it, it has shifted what the final. Discussion looks like.
That may necessarily be good, right? Because that's three members out of seven instead of the full seven having a boy.
That's, that's a possibility as well.
And I, I've heard the same. And again, that's the only, we've only done it one way for so long that we don't really know what it'll be like, but. I really like alternative one, even though the meetings will be longer. I'm not sure I agree with necessarily the times, but that's something we can always discuss the times. But, you know, yes, the meetings will be longer, but we won't have the committee meetings. I just think it's. I, I think would be a better option.
Seems like it's an efficiency for both staff and council, and it's more transparent for the public. To do it as a part of a session instead of having the committee meetings that happen in the mornings, which is challenging for me at least.
Yeah.
It's not about me only, but it's also hard for the public to show up and it is more staff time intensive.
But future council members too, I mean, yeah, you think about that, right? Some of us have, we have more flexibility in our, in our regular work lives or retired or whatever. But you know, down the road, you never know, we could have seven council members who all have a nine to five job. You can't do committee meetings starting today. I'm sure it's difficult for you to do that.
And, and yeah, we've had, you know, council members in the past that have struggles trying to, trying to do something during the day. Um. You know, I, I'm open, I'm always open to try to find more efficiencies and a better way of doing it. Um. My worry um, is that the council meetings and work sessions. Get too long because I, I, I do feel like there comes a point in a work session or a council meeting where um. Today being one of them, I, let's see where everyone's head is at the end of this meeting. Um, at some point, you start losing the council. You start losing the council and you're not making as good decisions because of how long the meeting has been. And uh, you know, two and a half hours is about as far as. Most meetings can go and, and still have productive dialogue in my opinion. So that is my one worry about this, is if we get into this. Um. I don't want just to shove everything into a meeting because that's what, the way we do it now. Um, staff needs to be, I think, cognizant of. That time and, and, and don't schedule things that where it is a three and a half hour meeting. Because that um, is not gonna do anyone any good. I'd rather have less agenda items and we have to do it in one more work session later. Than try to shove everything in and we have a, not a productive meeting.
Well, Mayor Ritter, I think that's a really good point too, is that none of the alternatives would prohibit another special meeting being set up for maybe uh, when there isn't. Uh, other things that need to be discussed in front of the council, whether it's policy or if it is informational only. That certainly would be at the council's discretion.
So making this shift would be an experiment. I would assume that we would have at some point in the process, an after-action review. Talk as a council, how is this working? What are the pros? What are the cons? And then may, maybe make adjustments accordingly to what the needs are uh, for the council. And then may, maybe make adjustments accordingly to what the needs are uh for the council, for the public. But I, I do like, I do like uh alternative one, I would support that for sure.
And council member Coco, uh, your, your, your point is spot on with the C in the domain process, it's about control. So it's about coming back and finding out where our assumptions working or have values shifted. And so it'd be like, what can we do to get the result ultimately that is best for stakeholders?
I mean, that's case scenario, we could go back to the old way.
Yeah, and I, I do remember why we actually went to another committee um back in, I guess it was in two thousand twelve. Because uh council members at the time felt like there needed to be more focus on, on environmental land, land use issues. So we separated those into two separate committees, so we could spend more time deep diving on those issues, that's why that was the thought process behind it now.
And we, we had so much coming from the planning commission, that the land use was, was, was predominant, it took a lot of time.
Yeah, and so we've thought, well, let's spread it out, and it also worked out for like council member wise, each council member could be on three committees, and it sort of worked out that way. Because otherwise, you're leaving council members off some committees, and it just didn't seem as fair.
I do wanna mention though, on the land use item, as things come from the planning commission. Yeah, we created that committee, but everything still went to work session, then the council for action. Um, and so there, it created that deeper dive and that, that additional committee. But it still created those and um, and then also to going back to Shannon's point, as well as, you know, the terms of scheduling and timing, that's we're kind of working on how we uh adjust schedule plan uh topics out, but also we have the city manager report, write information on, tied into the council meeting, as well as if there's a time sensitive issue, we've always had been able to move, uh, have a work session after a council meeting. So there are ways you can deal with those topics and, and try to keep that meeting schedules to a, a reasonable time.
You have something?
I do, um, I, I see the efficiencies in alternative one, and I like what I'm seeing there. But one, one little bit of deeper dive I'd like to do is um, come back with what a work session agenda might look like, how that would change. Because I think, I think we can't just go down the same path that we've been going with our work sessions if we're gonna have this new dynamic. So, um.
Yeah, because I, I still think uh at some point during the month or in a, a work session, Troy's gonna have to report out on the, on the financial information that we've been receiving in the finance committee, it's just that's information this council needs on a monthly basis, one way or the other.
It does have to go, I, you're, no question, it still needs to be reported out, but
So council member Cox, um, we can certainly do a deeper dive into that, and then we can also come back and just show what a transition plan would look like moving forward, if we were to move away as kind of a follow up conversation.
Andy's example about the, you know, the finance, monthly finance report, you know, which agenda might that land on? How much time is it gonna consume in the agenda? And, you know, really start looking at, you know, how we're gonna use that, that time and use it as, as well as we can.
Yeah, the council members.
Seven, sixty percent of the stuff from that agenda does wind up coming to the full council anyway. So it's really only forty percent of that agenda, that finance agenda, right, that is really gonna change. There's sixty percent coming to council anyway.
Sure.
Yeah.
No, but I mean, just like if, if there's gonna have to be a placeholder, a monthly placeholder at a work session for a finance report, we we need to know that, you know, and we need to know how that might look and.
Is the vehicle to affect this change in ordinance?
Yes.
It would require an ordinance and a resolution, since there are numbers of sections of the policy manual that would also need to be updated to reflect that. So we would also, like I said, need to come up with a kind of transition.
The second half of the project.
Well, and, and I, I, yeah, we've, we've contemplated that to some degree, council member Vasquez, but we certainly wanna sharpen up that pencil and come back to the council with that.
When, when you think you'll come back to the council on this? And the other thing that we need to talk about is, and something I've been wanting to talk about for a long time is, are when council meets. I know that's, I think a part of this that you're gonna talk about maybe next, I'm not sure.
I, I will talk about that um next, I think that's a great kind of uh segue into that, unless there are any other comments by the council members. But I, I feel like we got good direction to come back.
Member Seven, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, I would support uh one, two, or three, but I'm not a fan of four.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so before I, I move on to that next section, I would be uh remiss if I did not just extend my appreciation and gratitude to members of our city clerk teams, including our former uh city clerk Perry Edmonds, but also Alyssa Fontaine as well as our public affairs team, uh John Coke, for example. Uh, all helped provide and gather information and data on this, as well as the executive team, who are really important and integral part of reviewing this. So I do wanna pass on my appreciation for that. I also wanna pass on my appreciation to Nicole Williams, who is the um uh, uh, executive to the city manager, who actually put together this next slide of all the meetings that are here in Thurston County. So um what I'm showing you here is a, a monthly, an average month of meetings. Um, and you can see kind of week one, week two, week three, week four, and then Monday uh through Friday. And what it's showing you in meetings in blue are city meetings, this includes currently our committee meetings, as well as our work sessions and regular meetings. Uh, items identified in that yellow color are regional meetings. Items identified in the green are uh advisory board meetings. And then we've also identified Thurston County meetings, a limited number of Thurston County meetings in gray. Um, Tumwater, City of Tumwater Council meetings in uh pink, and then uh City of Olympia meetings also uh in an orangeish color, which looks very similar to uh the, the yellow here in this particular rendering. Um, but we found looking through these various uh meetings, whether they were advisory boards or regional meetings was um when we're looking at potential times other than Thursday for moving council meetings. It does look like um Tuesday would be the uh preferred alternative uh based on, again, regional and advisory board meetings. Um, but I would highlight that a move to Tuesday would also require moving some advisory board meetings. So for example, Planning Commission um is currently a board that meets on Tuesdays. Um, so if, if the council were to be looking um for options outside of Thursday, we would recommend uh potentially considering Tuesday.
And then we'd meet the same day, and they both meet on Tuesday, right?
And when can we get started on this ship?
Uh, well, is there direction from the council?
I mean, I think we should be meet, I've, I've been saying this for many, many years, we should be meeting on Tuesdays. This, the problem is, is the entire region, as you can see, has their meeting on Tuesdays. And so what happens is all the events that happen in Thurston County, they schedule them for Thursdays. And City Lacy always misses them, and we've been, I've been missing them for fourteen years now. And so it's, uh, it just doesn't make any sense for us to be on Thursdays. Plus, there's other, lots of other things that happen on Thursdays. Um, that uh, you know, it's just not a great evening to meet all the week. I think any day besides, I guess Friday, um, it is be, is better than, than Thursday.
You wanna meet on Fridays?
I will say, um, looking at Mondays and Wednesdays though, too, just to um take a look at the information here, there are some advisory boards that could potentially run into a council meeting in the evening. Or, and not advisory boards, excuse me, regional.
Your social meetings, yeah.
Anyone know, wanna meet on Tuesdays, cause?
I, I'm fine, it's, it seems like I heard somewhere along the line that there was a difficulty with uh TC Media, because they couldn't handle all the contracts if everybody met on the same day. And maybe I'm misremembering that. Broadcasting the meetings.
There'd be coordination needs to be able to broadcast, but also too, we all have our, our various ways of broadcasting those meetings, and that would be something that we'd be able to work through and, and, and resolve. Uh, but yeah, that's a shame that if we have some direction, then we can start working on that implementation plan. And uh what that would look like in order to shift things over. And uh, and also look at what would we do with the uh, what is it, the Pining Commission and uh, uh, Youth Council, I believe.
No, the Youth Council's fine. Um, right now, the Youth Council is gonna be making on Tuesdays. Um, and Thursdays, but this time they'll just meet on Tuesdays for both of their.
So it would essentially be switching their work session and their regular meetings.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm happy with it, because I, I mean, I suffer from a lot of what he's talking about, conflicts with our meeting and other things that.
I'm, I, I think I totally agree on Tuesdays, because there's a lot of things that happen on Thursdays, like Andy said, that I've not been able to attend.
And then if we just look at meeting nights, and again, going back to the alternatives for meeting structure or flow that I hear that you look at what implementing like alternative one would go back with a plan for alternative one, but also with that have a, you know, show some examples of what agenda scheduling would look like as an example, and um um, what would you think about? And how that would be implemented with all the different steps that Shannon mentioned.
Yeah.
There's some shit words and the various things that will be changed.
I was thinking about moving the meeting to five thirty instead of.
That, that was if we were gonna add um an extra special meeting on it, we'd have to.
Those are, those are examples, and I, I certainly think we could come back when we have a con- control plan for discussion on those items.
I think it was looking just to compensate if you had an extra time.
Right.
You start five thirty or in a little bit later, uh, that'd be the decision.
Going a little later personally, and again, I think for a couple of reasons, one, the public five thirty cuts it pretty close to when people get up work, and then council members now and future, they may get off at five and five thirty is pretty tight.
Yeah, I, I agree, uh, I think we need to keep that at six o'clock, I mean, we used to meet at seven, so. So, I mean, yeah.
Staff has been here since, you know, eight thirty in the morning, not one of you until ten o'clock at night.
Well, thank you, council members, I feel like I've got some great direction, and I will be returning shortly with some more information.
Great, thank you.
Shannon, you've done wonderful job. That's amazing.
Very informative.
Thank you.
So next up is our um Parks and Culture Recreation Comp Plan.
Well, actually, before I pull up the presentation, uh, let me take the opportunity to uh introduce Jenny Wilson as our new senior parks planner. Uh, you'll recognize Jenny, she's been with the city for twenty-one years in the Parks Department, um, she's been able to help us with uh lots of different types of projects and um has been successful with community outreach, which will be very important in her new role. Um, so she will be helping with uh this type of planning in the future and taking the lead. She's also gonna be taking the lead with the Parks Culture and Recreation Board. Uh, she'll be our liaison with Community and Economic Development uh Department. She's also gonna oversee our enhancements program, which is our smaller parks projects and often in conjunction with, you know, community groups. And then eventually, um, we'll probably get her into some of the bigger capital projects. Uh, but I just wanna thank her for jumping in, she's, she's jumped in and, and started helping us with the Capital Facilities Plan update and just kind of showing how crucial this position is for our department, it is a new position, so we'll need to backfill her recreation supervisor uh position. So.
Thank you for having me.
So she's gonna um watch and, and be in training for this conversation, so. I will share my screen, and it's my pleasure to uh discuss the twenty twenty-three Lacey Parks Culture and Recreation Comprehensive Plan update tonight. Um, this is very exciting, so our staff is, our staff committee has been working on this since September of twenty twenty-two, so almost a year now. Very large project, um, and I wanted to go over why we do this update. So in addition to being a guiding document for the Parks Culture and Recreation Department and the Parks Board, it's also part of a bigger picture, which is the city's comprehensive plan. Um, this also helps us to be eligible for RCO grant opportunities, they do require a six-year update every um on file with their office, and it needs to be approved by city council, so this is a crucial step for that. Uh, also, it is a chance to evaluate facilities and services, assess demand and need. Um, in the comp plan draft, you will see ten parks planning areas, as indicated here on this map. And with each section um in the plan, it goes through the conditions and needs, uh, conditions assessment and needs analysis. Uh, it also, uh, in, in terms of why, provides uh public uh input to address needs, which is super important. As we know, um, it allows us to set goals and the policies and objectives to get to those goals, uh, also identifies levels of service. So the team that updates the parks plan, we'll call the parks plan for short. The public, city staff, city boards. Um, city council. So I, I really wanna thank everyone who's been involved with this update, there has been a lot from commissions to staff, various departments, you know, special thank you to Community and Economic Development, Public Affairs, Public Works, and all the park staff. Wanted to emphasize the city's mission has been top of mind throughout the process, um. A couple of key words here, enriching the quality of life, um, building an attractive, inviting and secure community, and of course, council working in partnership with residents. To foster community pride, develop the economy, plan for the future, and preserve and enhance our environment. And the Parks Culture Recreation Vision um has been updated with this plan process. Um, it's much shorter than it used to be, it's maybe a quarter the length, uh, really uh zones in on, you know, creating exceptional, exceptional events and experiences and environments that delight, educate and inspire the human spirit, connecting people to each other and the past, and building a strong, healthy community. And what's neat about this is that the historical commission and the Parks Board were able to weigh in on this vision for the department. Couple of facts about Lacy, um. So the incorporated boundary is nineteen square miles, the UGA is fourteen point five, add those together. Um, there's twenty-one thousand two hundred and ninety-eight acres of total planning area, and so for parks, we do plan for that entire area, because as we know, people, the UGA used parks, Lacy's park system, and of course, outside that as well. Um, in terms of our overall park acreage compared to the population, uh, we have one thousand two hundred and sixty-three acres of park lands to ninety-five, to the ninety-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine people. Um, a national standard set by the National Recreation and Park Association is ten acres per thousand. So with nine hundred and thirty-two acres, uh, we would be hitting the national standard, so we are above national standard. Um, as we know, we're surrounded by exceptional natural beauty, and we are the fastest growing city in the county, and now the largest uh, which equals a needs, the need for facilities, recreation and cultural opportunities, of course. Um, a little bit about the department, um, I know a lot of you know this, but for the benefit of anybody who might be watching as well, and just a reminder, we talked about the acres of parkland, um, but the department also produces fifteen, approximately fifteen family events per year. Uh, over eleven hundred community recreation classes and sports museum, cultural arts and aquatics programs, trips and tours, et cetera, uh, over thirty weeks of day camps. And since we have our first annual volunteer recognition event tomorrow night, that Jenny's actually putting on at Rainier Vista Park, um. We had five hundred and fifty volunteers last year in twenty twenty-two, so a lot of people helping us. And excited about these programs, um, we're also very proud of facilities such as, you know, this isn't, this isn't all the list of our facilities and parks, but some that stand out, the Regional Athletic Complex, Lacy Museum, Lacy Community Center, Jacob Smith House, Lacy Depot. Um, also very proud of partnerships, um, such as with Senior Services for South Sound uh, at the Senior Center and with North Thurston Public Schools, again, there's a lot of partnerships we have, but these are some key ones. Um, and you'll see in the plan, you know, just that, that mentality and um emphasis that together we can provide more to people, and Lacy, you'll see, um, yeah, you'll, you'll see that, just sharing resources is a smart thing to do. Of course, you know that. Uh, in the executive summary, you'll see a lot of information regarding the benefits. Um, I've listed a few here on the slide, uh, inclusion, resilience, not only environmental but also personal resilience, um, that kind of goes along with the mental wellbeing, uh, physical health, uh, access to play, and then opportunities to build community are all benefits of Parks Culture and Recreation. Um, we also see in the executive summary the significant challenges that are outlined. Three main ones, keeping up with growth, and along with that is maintenance of aging infrastructure. Um, continuing to move from acquisition to a development or park improvement phase. Um, let's get, you know, people access to their public spaces, great example is Great Kewo Park. Uh and then solidifying a future funding strategy. There's currently no ongoing funding sources dedicated. To essential park uh uh infrastructure replacement and parks development, and these rely heavily on the general fund and outside revenue sources. Um neither of which are sufficient to meet the needs of the proposed parks projects.
I I know um we are going to a, you know, away from the acquisition into the development of parks. I'm trying to remember if I've seen a map that shows is is everyone within a ten-minute walk to to the park. Or, you you know, because we we signed up for that challenge where, you know, we want to make sure everyone is at least, you know, ten minutes away from a park or community. How how much is?
Yeah, so I can show you that. Um we'll go into, once I get to that section, I can go flip over into the plan.
Okay.
And show you the maps. Um we, yes, that is a level of service and we're striving for that. We're not quite there, but uh we're on the right path, so. Um. I do believe with collaboration with other things that are out there for the community.
We can get there.
Get there. Um you'll see the strategic goals and um the, this one in particular, the first one, there's five of them. Uh but again, the historical commission, the Parks Board has weighed in a couple of different times. Commission Equity has weighed in on these strategic goals. Super appreciate their efforts um with that. So develop a high-quality, equitable, diversified parks culture and recreation system. Where physical, financial, social and cultural barriers aren't eliminated, which includes unique facilities, events and recreation and cultural programs. This encourages social interaction, cultivates community spirit and strengthens the livability of Lacey in addition to meeting community needs. Uh the second one has to do with funding and leveraging um. Investments, so prioritizing Lacey Parks projects and facilities, identifying corresponding current and future funding sources. Leveraging investments and partnerships and maintaining Lacey's eligibility for grant funding. And then the third strategic goal, um develop a trail system that interconnects parks, schools, neighborhoods, open spaces, other trail systems and important public facilities. Um you can imagine the historical commission had a lot to do with this one. Educate and engage the public with the heritage of Lacey and the South Sound region. Through mission-driven programs and exhibits and by preserving sites and artifacts of historical and cultural importance and making them accessible to them.
Does everyone know what the picture on the bottom is? Anyone, does anyone know what the picture on the bottom is?
The same one.
At the old Lacey Elementary.
I don't want. Um and the Commission Equity had a lot to say about this one, utilizing sustainable systems and practices. That ensure the environmental, economic, social and cultural needs and desires of future generations will not be compromised. So those are the five strategic goals. Um regarding public input section, there's a very robust um section in the plan. Uh here are the highlights. Uh we spent twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two engaging with the public for this plan update. Um in twenty twenty one, this slide captures some of the data from Lacey Cares Outreach. Which had a focus on how people wanted their city to look, feel and function in the future and establish a framework for um parks strategic planning. Because we did not only the broad Lacey cares took place, but also a deep dive into parks. And in twenty twenty two. Uh we continued on with um energized Lacey. And we were able to reach back out and establish priorities for a shared vision for the Parks Plan Update and the future of um. Parks Culture and Recreation assets and opportunities. And I do want to point out, the Great Qyo Park Master Plan overlapped with the other parks outreach. Um you'll probably remember that, but. As you know, this was in and of itself a major interaction with the public, and so um what we found with the. Data, um. Programming priorities that came out of it definitely matched up with some of the other data collected. So for example. Walking and biking trails, that's one of the main top themes with the other outreach as well. See that one up at the top.
Would you think that's the biggest public outreach we've ever done when it comes to parks?
Um, the Great Qyo Park?
Yeah.
Uh well, we. I wouldn't say the biggest because the others were equally as successful. I think the Lacey cares.
Yeah.
Was probably.
Big one.
Uh because we had so many participants, uh it was, it's very exciting because I haven't seen this level of participation and. You know, part of it is having more ways to get out to people with all the digital.
That's true.
Ways, but it's just really exciting that people are engaging, but but we had seven hundred and ten responses to this one.
I think that sort of kicked it off and it's gotten people interested in our parks and it's just continued.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is great. We had, now this was during COVID, so we couldn't be in person. Um but the, what I found impressive was the follow-up online survey, so they, so they maybe didn't make it to the workshop, but. Then they went online and did the survey, so people that were at the workshop or afterwards could give input. And then top themes from the public outreach were indoor pool, um indoor recreation opportunities such as a indoor playground. Um trails and preservation of open space. Spray parks. Uh year-round multi-person, purpose synthetic turf um sports fields. So one of the things we really um. Were able to validate is that in working with the public and in particular the outreach team, we had an outreach team who helped and then they. Became a parks task force that we could meet with and discuss. Um and that was really helpful. And this is kind of a no-brainer. There's very different users in our park system. There's a, you know, the general public and then there are stakeholders for certain. Things such as sports, but it was, it was um nice to be able to differentiate those two different populations. Um and. A key takeaway that came out of those meetings was um really. You know, not not looking for more space for sports fields, but just finishing the ones that the city already has and has planned for fields.
Over two.
There's a pretty um. There's a mi- uh kind of a misconception that there's so many sports fields that there's, there's enough for everybody, but. Uh really, there's, there's not enough and people are getting turned away. So um I think that was important to point out in the plan. And the other, so good examples are Meridian Park, their sports fields scheduled for there that haven't, haven't gone in yet. Um and then the Rack Phase Three, those would be the the spaces that the city already has for those. For people. Um and then the other big takeaway was affordable subsized recreation opportunities, so events and classes, just validation that people really like what, what we're offering. That was nice. Um proposed updates and key goals and policy changes from the last plan are listed out in your staff report. Um I've covered some of them already too, but I I want to highlight some on the next few slides. So levels of service, you kind of touched on that. Um in terms of parks. Currently, there's no required level of service standard, and since communities differ greatly, um it's up to. You know, each community to set their level of service, but a very common one is the point five mile or the ten-minute walk that you're referring to, Mayor. Um and that is having a neighborhood park or trail within a point five mile radius of every resident. Um so. Because we can look at the. Overall park acreage, which we are very solid as we looked at the national standard, but. You know, how's the distribution and the access, right, for people? Um and the quality, so. In terms of that, um quality is difficult to assess. However, we have received countless comments from park visitors indicating Lacey has high quality, have heavily used parks. Uh we hear things like parks are well-built and attractive, parks are well-maintained. And clean, parks and programs are welcoming, friendly staff, um people feel safe, people care and have, care about the parks and have pride in the parks. Um. But in the twenty twenty three update, it does identify that in the future, a more formalized assessment of amenity conditions should be included. In the level of service evaluation, uh even if it's just a very simple A B C rating or one, two, three. Um and looking at better tools and metrics, um moving forward to kind of assess the, the needs of the different parks. Um. And so. And then also for the twenty twenty three plan update, although the level of service standard is that point five mile walk. Um we changed it from a walk shed to a travel shed since not everybody walks. But that, so that was a, an update. Um and then you'll see in the maps. What access is actually like, taking into account barriers to access, for example, neighborhoods with no through streets. A body of water, a private property that you a- you actually can't get through, so I'll pull up that in just a moment here. Um. The other thing I'm going to show you is that. There are a lot of publicly accessible parks in addition to those all owned and provided by the city, and I touched on that earlier, so. I think it's significant because it shows just other opportunities. It really tells a full story of what Lacey has and in the spirit of. Partnership and collaboration moving forward, um that might be something that we can use to define our level of service as well and maybe take into account the school facilities.
I I think so. The school facilities, it's. Open for most of the public and um especially in some of the uh other parks there in our neighborhoods too. I mean. They're there, especially northeast Lacey, they're there because we required them to put in parks instead of collecting a, a park fee and us developing the parks. You know, so it's, it's, I, uh, those are our parks too.
So, um. Okay, so these are the travel sheds, so they're kind of, so and in the past plan, you may recall, it was just a bubble, an exact circle, but again, that's not a realistic view. So I just want to thank our parks manager supervisor Jamie Oakland and also Gary Montgomery, our G I S coordinator. They spent a lot of time figuring out these. Travel sheds um and what, you know, where people could actually get to and not. Um. So you can see, and also Great Qyo Park isn't open yet, so there's no access level around that. There will be, or travel shed, I'm sorry. Um. And then in talking about our non-city parks and facilities, we've added in um. You know, some other municipality. And government, um you know, site and state parks, county parks in Brown, and then we've got. Also, the, some of the HO, some of the bigger, more significant HOA and like Tanglewild, um you know, Park District, et cetera. So you can see those, they did those travel sheds in the colors here, and then when you put them together. This is the story of really what will happen in Lacey. So there are still some gaps. Um. As you can see up in here, there's a little one down here, but I think if we can uh maybe add some of the school sites in there, that we can close those gaps.
Also to some of those gaps, you have uh the area around the bills, it's going to develop now at some point. You have some potential different spots, and then of course, that Marvin Road Quarter on the. East side is a lot of industrial and commercial, so.
Yeah.
So if you compare this one to this one.
Most of the community does have an access.
Yeah.
Five minute or five mile, whatever it was.
The point fives.
Yeah.
Travel shed. Um and while we are in here, the other thing that we did is um. Mapped uh frequently traveled bus routes and their proximity to the parks, and that will help us with the starting point, kind of moving forward to outevaluate, you know, what the, what accessibility looks like. Leave that one, if you visit for just a second. Sorry, I have to pause because I just love this. So we, we did the whole format for the plan too, and so hopefully you notice like all the full-page photos and kind of bright colors that we have in here, so. Appreciate it to staff for making that happen. Um. So let me see where that one is. I need to search by. There it is. Um. So this shows the, we did the side-by-side because so there wasn't too much information on one map, but this shows a. So areas with public transit every thirty minutes are considered frequent on this map. The travel sheds indicated are. Point two-five mile or a five-minute travel from the bus stop, so you can just kind of see. How, you know, it might be a little bit difficult to get to some of the park sites. The, there's a lot of information in the bi- um pedestrian and bicycle plan. That Community and Economic Development did in twenty eighteen, and so. Uh that's one of the things that we added to this plan as well, to kind of connect those two plans.
Be interesting to put a buildable lands map on this, so which would show future residential. Right? Because that can give you an idea of where we expect the uh the growth to happen and especially in our urban growth area. And then we'd have an idea of um depending on the size of it and especially, or if Lacey was in control of it, you know, I really do like how Lacey. Um especially a developed neighborhood, we s- we have the developer put in, put in the, the park. Um and because that's what they do, I, and I think that's, it's worked out very well compared to other jurisdictions where um. They don't include it necessarily within the master plan of of that uh that neighborhood, and then. Later you have to go back and buy it and so on and so forth, and also let them just do it to get go and um it's, it's really worked out, so. So the reason why I'm, I've been wanting Lacey to make sure we're in control of our urban growth area.
If I can just add on to that, with that ten percent requirement for open space for residential developments, you know, that was a policy decision down in the mid nineties. Because, you know, they looked at the park impact fees and trying to figure out, by the time you collect enough fees, the price of land, that value doesn't keep up with acquisition of land. But also too, with our environmental regulations and protection of sensitive areas, there are your floodplains, your shorelines, your wetlands, those type of things. That's not included in this open space total, but that is another, about double that in terms of area. That are protected in tree tracts or rainy areas that create just that aesthetic.
Yeah.
Space as well.
Especially can say, especially we consider our, 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 our three main lakes are almost access to open public. Facilities too, because they're all open to the public, so you can put those on the map as almost, oh yeah, almost park-like.
Right.
Yeah, and and now it's actually a village center designation, and that had a, uh, believe a thirty percent requirement for open space, and they met that by providing a community park. And the dedication of that. And then, of course, Summer Walk has the linear trail that connects to a parkside drive up to the. Rainer Vista and down to the area that has park buildings within it. That's a, also was a village center.
Put in an additional park.
Yes. So through a combination of the parks plan and policies that Jen's been working on and and the acquisition that we're developing phases and and um. Uh values regulations, we'll be able to lend those two missions together.
Um in term, and you'll see this in your staff report too, but in terms of uh recreation, museum and cultural programs, level of service, we added some um. Discussion in there about those. So here again, there's no formal level of service, so. Within programming, there's flexibility to be able to adapt to emerging, um you know, community needs and fill gaps that other organizations are not providing. So this plan establishes guiding principles, um which are to provide and support recreation and cultural programs. That are socially responsible, economically accountable and equitable. Um same is true for museums. But museums, their core standards as defined by the American Alliance of Museums, and so we were able to add that wording into the plan as well. Um they are to be adaptable and expected of museums of all types and sizes, uh with each museum fulfilling them in different ways. Based on their structure and circumstances. And so um. Our museum strategic plan pretty much has all those core values, uh so we were able to, uh you know, reference. Those two plans together as well. Uh the Park Capital Improvement Program, this is new, a new addition to the Parks Plan. It lists the near-term implementation actions. With estimated costs, estimated years that projects could take place. You know, of course, based on funding both capital and maintenance and operations. Um so this new format is going to feed nicely into the city's new capital improvement. Um plan that's being worked on, and then also it's already been helpful in updating the Capital Facilities Plan, which we're working pretty heavily on right now. Uh it's really important as you're looking through this to note that the projects are rough estimates only and. The program allows for flexibility, so um. We basically do our best to anticipate and estimate. Uh one more thing I wanted to point out on this slide is that we added Lacey's demographic information at the request of the Commission on Equity into the plan. And then. Um I already mentioned the Lacey Museum Strategic Plan is um integrated. The other thing we're excited about is we've incorporated the D E I uh draft strategic plan components. Into uh the policies and objectives for this plan. And then we, I mentioned this early, we, earlier, we referenced and um connected the city's pedestrian and bicycle plan. In as well, and so what we're planning to do is. Uh once we get a finalized comprehensive plan onto the website, um put these other plans, link those right next to it, so that every, you know, the public can access everything altogether, so. Excited about getting organized in that way. Um. And I already talked about revamping the format and the look, so. This is a quick timeline, just for the approval process, we got through all city staff and public comments by May thirtieth of this year. We went through the Planning Commission and had did the public hearing on July eighteen, which they then recommended the plan to council. And so with your permission, we would want to put it on next week's City Council Agenda.
Sounds good, any questions?
I just want to add to that, this will be part of the annual twenty twenty-three Conference Plan Update, that package that the council can adopt once a year. And this will be a major part of it, the other two items, this and also the comp plan. Request for comp plan redesignation for the Glenwood property, and that went through a public hearing with the Planning Commission and recommending approval of that. To re-designate that property from, I think it's high-density residential to open space institutional, a better fit to Glenwood Retreat Center and that area around Hicks Lake, so that's going to be on as part of this package as well next week.
I think, you know, obviously there's a lot of great work that's gone into it, I'm I'm a huge fan of our parks, as you know, and so I'm definitely. Really interested in the implementation phase of it, and I I know, obviously, having a financial plan to to. You know, for this is extremely important, that the one thing that I do think would be nice in to think about is our youth council, if they had a maybe a little bit of an input on this, I was just. Was here all afternoon doing doing interviews with for the next youth council, and it was amazing how many of them. Said they would like to be more actively participating in our in our local government and decision-making, and. This is definitely one of those areas, I know that our youth council member has been a part of on the store commission and on Parks Board, so that did have some input as this had gone through. But, you know, it's, I think.
And and I did go to the commission, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that, yeah, you'll see in the plan, it's got all the different commissions, that's the one I didn't mention, so I apologize for that. Yeah, I went to them early for the input stage.
Good.
And trying to get them to have others.
Yes.
Of that age weigh in.
That's important.
And then went back with a draft and was able to share.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
Now, just, you know, the public, we hear a lot from the public about the parks, and they really do love the parks as, I mean, it's it's a really big part of what makes this community. As great as it is, we and we hear it from the public a lot. Probably one of the things I hear about more than from on a pile, we always hear the negatives, right, that's part of being on council, but from a positive perspective, I hear more about parks than probably anything else. So you guys, your team does a great job.
Absolutely agree, that's one of the things, that's, oh, we love this, we love your parks.
Yeah.
Okay, well. Let's go into our next gen, I'm. Just a rack twenty-year financial plan update.
Well, they got it over now. Well, Troy and I are here to go over the updated twenty-year financial plan for the rec, the regional athletic complex. We're going to tag team, so I'll get it started, then I'll pass it over to Troy. And if you'll recall, there were a number of events that prompted the need for a five-year financial strategy to be implemented in twenty twenty-one, so we had worked on it in twenty twenty. And took it through the Parks Board at that point, but we would like to expand that through twenty twenty-nine, as you'll see in the separate word. And we will get into the details. But this plan update is for the years twenty twenty-four through twenty forty-three. The update was prepared by city staff, so I want to thank Scott Devlin, Sue Phailash, Julie McFadden, Jamie Oakland and Troy. It was recommended to City Council by the Lacey Parks Culture and Recreation Board, and they're your commissioners. So we're going to go over some background, recommendations, considerations, and tonight we're looking for acceptance to move this forward to next week's City Council meeting. Just a little bit of background, the the rack was purchased by Thurston County and the City of Lacey back in nineteen ninety-eight. And it was jointly acquired and planned and funded and developed together to maintain an athletic complex. The MOU provided joint ownership for a minimum, minimum of fifteen years, at least through March of twenty fourteen. The county and the city planned the complex cooperatively with considerable public input to provide athletic needs in the region. As well as a community park with picnic shelters, play equipment and facilities needed to hold special events. So in two thousand two. Voters in the city of Lacey approved a bond issue for development of the rack as well as several other parks. Also, in two thousand two, the Capital Area Regional Public Facilities District, or we refer to it as the PFD, was formed by the county. The cities of Lacey, Olympia and Tom Water for the purpose of developing the rack and the Hands-on Children's Museum. In two thousand four, Phase One of the rack was completed, and then Phase Two was opened then in two thousand nine with the addition of. More fields, picnic shelters, basketball courts, play equipment, trails, restrooms and parking, and. And this completed the current vision for the athletic fields. Then in twenty ten, the Lacey City Council authorized an agreement for the transfer of Thurston County's share of the ownership of the rack to the City of Lacey.
Troy, can you, I've been wanting to ask this question for a while, the PFD is obviously, as it's set up, it's a percentage of the sales tax that will go on the state that's being deflected going to the PFD. That is obviously based on the sales tax within the cities of Lacey, Olympia and Tom Waters, the PFD area, right? Oh, and Thurston County, all of Thurston County as well, so but not Yelm, not the other cities, just Thurston County. Okay, obviously, that's every year, do you get, is it diverted once a year, or is it every month that gets diverted?
It's monthly, so we get the same distribution as our regular sales tax.
Okay.
Through the PFD, and then we distribute it to Lacey and Olympia, since technically it's a separate.
Sure, and so. Obviously, we've had record sales tax collections, so what is happening to the those additional, is it going straight to pay down the additional bonds, or? Do, are we only authorized up to the bond payment, and then the rest goes back to the state or something like that?
No, it's a fixed rate, and you kind of put me on the spot.
Sorry.
It's like a point zero three three percent, and you're right, it is a credit against the state's portion of sales tax, so it's not. An overall sales tax increase.
Yep.
So it is based on the taxable sales that occur in that district, which again is the county limits.
Yep. And it goes to the PFD, then gets split on a basis between the Children Hands-on Museum and this.
It does, so it's.
Every month, so we could have more or less than what we projected at the beginning of the PFD.
That's correct, so the split is roughly seventy-two percent to Lacey, twenty-eight percent to Olympia. Yeah, and there's no limit, it's really based on the sales that take place, so we have had very strong sales tax throughout the county, so. It's been growth, and obviously Tom Waters is seeing a lot.
Have we taken those extra revenue that we received from the PFD to pay the bonds down, or do we have a bunch of money sitting in the PFD account?
It's building up our future capital.
Building up for future capital, do you know how much more extra we have in that compared to what we thought we would with the the payment of the bonds?
I can't speak to what our.
Isn't that a big part of the future of the PFD is how much money is sitting in that account?
Correct, so we have right around four million dollars in reserves. I can't speak to what we projected way back in those early years, I wasn't sure. I know we weren't making those projections for a long time, in fact, we didn't hit those until, probably after the Great Recession.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, I remember it was, I thought we thought we would collect forty million dollars over the life, but don't quote me on that, but we weren't thinking we were going to make that.
At one time, especially early on.
Right, because we were barely making the.
The payment, yep, I remember.
And I think that was exactly the same for Olympia as well, for the debt they have on the children's museum, so those early years are very, very tight.
Yeah, but then we've been, have these extra years that we have built up both on the Olympia side and our side.
Can't speak for Olympia, but for our side, sure.
And that four million dollars is a rough number, that's in there, that's for a future capital improvement, right, that's for.
It can be, it's not a restriction at the ease for capital, but you know, our longstanding practice of matching one-time money and one-time projects. You know, we have used some of those funds for operation, in fact, we're currently using two hundred thousand per year for the operation of the rack, but there isn't a restriction just for capital.
But that could be money used toward Phase Three, that could be.
It will be, yeah. Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, we haven't had that deep of a conversation when it comes to the F D.
And then just the, you know, the community need was. Important then, it still is now, it's very heavily used, you know, not only for rental opportunities and tournament opportunities, but people who. Walk daily, you know, people use it as a neighborhood park, so neighborhood, community and regional park, so it really does a lot. And then, so the rack is used by an estimated two hundred thousand athletic participants, that's league and tournament play per year, and then we estimate one point two million. Park users and special event patrons per year, and we are getting better with our data, we've been talking about that recently, just trying to get better ways to get better counts and and metrics. The business owners, another segment, important segment of our community, saw over fifteen million dollars in economic impact in twenty twenty-two. And then we're on track for that or higher preliminary numbers for this year, January through June, are coming in right around seven billion. So we do work with the Experience Olympia. For and beyond for our economic impact numbers, they plug it into their calculator, and that's really helpful to see, you know, what that impact is to our greater community. So I think you've seen this slide a lot, just kind of reminder of how many different types of users we have on the soccer field side and the softball baseball side of the complex. Some of the recommendations in the financial plan are to increase use on the athletic fields by identifying slower rental times and maximizing the number of teams in a tournament, that equals increased revenue. Seek new innovative ways to increase revenues, staff are always working on that and and trying to attract different and new users in. Monitor the PFD revenues annually, continue to commit to lifecycle and capital improvements. And one example coming up is, you know, it is important to invest in the facility and that new parking lot, you know.
Is that done?
No. It's coming.
Okay.
But that's an example of.
Been planning for as long as I can.
Yeah, finally doing it, but I'm not sure exactly when, soon. So although the success of the rack, you know, cannot be questioned, it is not a self-supporting facility, and so to ensure, you know, that we can provide the same level of service now and into the future. Financial strategy has been developed in, as laid out in the financial plan. And so a couple of other points before I turn it over to Troy, and some of this will be repetitive, but the Thurston County settlement was depleted in twenty twenty. PFD sunsets in twenty twenty-seven with the city debt retirement, there is a potential for a fifteen-year extension, as you know, we've talked about that, staff is currently researching. And then the plan, the financial plan is reviewed periodically or following significant changes, so we have a commitment to do it that. And really wanting to, you know, important consideration is continue to provide that same level of service to our community.
And in order to extend it fifteen years, there has to be new debt though, isn't that correct?
And I, yeah, and I hope we can start talking about the planning of the Phase Three of the rack as soon as possible, because we're going to have to come up with a plan, what looks like cost estimate. Before we can ever get to the point of going on, and until we get to that point, we have no idea if the future PFD and then our existing. Revenues that we have is able to meet it, and so it's like, and that's to be done before by twenty twenty-seven, which is like right around the corner. We don't have very much time, and so.
Is that even realistic?
Yes, it's realistic, and I know we're working on it.
And as you get started with, like Jen said, we've got to start looking at the Phase Three, finalizing that concept design in this next year, and then start looking at how do we start getting into a final design in twenty twenty-five, and then positioning ourselves for. Moving forward with.
On top of that, we'll make some agreements, so this council will certainly be involved in that as well.
And and that the staff, we're starting to talk about what that could look like and bring that, some amendments to that, and originally a local agreement forward to council in the next, you know, year or so, it'd be assumed.
If there's not, you know, like we did it this, the first one here, obviously with Hands-on Children, if there's not another project like that, we can, can we do it without another project?
It's 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 under, it's our understanding that that to, you have to issue a debt to basically to the two original projects, so.
Refinancing.
It has to be the same, it has to be the original.
Next phase of the rack and any future phases of the children's hands-on museum.
So if they didn't have a future phase, then we couldn't do it on just without them.
No, we could, we could.
Oh, we could, okay.
Is there.
Phase three is part of the original.
Tourism Museum, is there another project?
Yeah, they're looking at doing some expansion, and and when we did the original master, but the original formation of the PFD, it had Phase Three included in that master plan. And and we still have to go through the conversation with all the partners in the PFD to make sure we're on the same page, so this conversation is going to be starting this fall. But, you know, again, coming back with an ILA, it's fairly soon to be able to move this process forward.
A O six to two hours in, I'm telling you.
We're right on time.
Two hours in.
I want to go to that slide, but you can read it. I did resume and it took me back to a different one, so I just did that. From current slide. Doing something weird, see, that's what I was getting when I.
Oh, yes.
Oh, is it just slow?
No, it's.
Oh, when you click, it'll pop up, you got it?
All right, well, that makes it easier, it's a little easier to see this way, so just wanted to provide a little bit of background on the financial account, the major assumptions that are within the model, rather than going through the full details, you have the very small print in your packet of. Every expenditure line and every revenue line, so I'd be happy to do a really deep dive, but these are kind of the the high-level assumptions, so. We have used, like I said, PFD revenues and to the two hundred thousand per year for many years. That does within the model can continue through two thousand twenty-four. And in two thousand twenty-five, just looking at the model itself and looking at the operating deficit, we're going to have a need to increase that to four hundred thousand per year, and we have that scheduled through two thousand twenty-nine. So the model makes the assumption that the PFD. Tax doesn't continue, so. I do want to recognize the council and their commitment to the rack, back in two thousand twenty, as part of your year-end process and identifying reserves and committing reserves, the council did identify eight hundred thousand at a time to. Again, supplement the operations of the rack, we continue to have growing expenditures and revenues not growing at that same pace, so the subsidy does continue to grow. Well, in two thousand twenty-three, the general fund support of the rack is five hundred and almost twenty-seven thousand, that does include that additional two hundred thousand in that reserve. We are, historically, we have requested from the lodging tax, and I've been granted and by the council to use one hundred and eight thousand. Of lodging tax for this facility, we do view this, and I don't think there's any argument, this is the biggest tourism facility within Lacey, so.
Then there's in county.
In the county, yes.
And several of our hoteliers, they say that the rack is only second to JBLM, fulfilling that.
No, I didn't know, that's some of the information we're getting out of some of the metrics and and VCP information too, it's great. Old metrics and and uh, V C P information too, it's great.
Uh, as we discussed, the PFD sales tax is tied to outstanding debt and Lacey's debt does expire, we pay it off in December two thousand twenty seven. And then if you look at the the operating side of the rack, um, we have reserves that can sustain the operations. With these other assumptions through two thousand thirty one, um, as we've talked about, we have, we've kept that. The PFD reserve separate for capital one-time uh, type of projects. Um, we do have within, you know, kind of to comment on phase three and that the four million dollars, we do have a. Twenty-year schedule for life cycle replacements, so think about resurfing the basketball court, field replacement, netting replacement, playground replacement, bathrooms, benches.
There's three playgrounds there.
So we we do have a.
Concrete.
We do have a detailed, robust replacement schedule as well, so as we start to discuss phase three. We need to keep that in mind too, to keep this a top-notch facility moving forward. Um, you know, so you know, kind of looking at these these bullet points, this is obviously a facility that we're subsidizing. Uh, you know, we, I I think the council in past years has recognized that this is a community park and a well-used community park, so it certainly. Justifies the use of general fund monies, you know, I think long term, we're going to have to probably have stronger considerations for that. Um, we're really relying on one-time revenues and and savings to sustain this, but at some point, I think we need to have that conversation about. The general fund really subsidizing that long term, or at least pining to. Um, you see throughout the plan, there's a lot of comments about maximizing revenues, maximizing programs, uh. I'm gonna get my soapbox a little bit here, I don't know, we could ask staff to do much more, it's incredible what they've done, and you look at the rack being booked. Fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two weeks, weekends per year. I I joked with the parks mission, we're going to have to have weekend, add weekends to the calendar year to actually fulfill that, and I, we all know that's not possible, so. Um, you know, again, I, you know, I think it's great that the councils recognize this as a community park and a community asset, and I think we're going to have to continue that thought process moving forward. So here is a rather busy chart that um, illustrates uh, the first ten years of the operating. Uh, projections for the rack, you know, like I said, we do have a um, a deficit. Um, projected each year going forward, again, that's a, you know, that's a result of revenues not growing as fast as expenditures. Um, so you do have the revenues in the in the green and then expenditures in the red. Um, the operating deficit there is the blue line, and that is a cumulative amount of operating deficit, so. The model assumes that the fifty-eight thousand our deficit for two thousand twenty-four is carried over to two thousand twenty-five. So there's an additional roughly thirty thousand our deficit in two thousand twenty-five and so on and so on as we as we move forward. Um, the the big drop there in two thousand thirty-one is the, um, you know, one of the reserves, that's the the P and D reserves dropping off, so that's that four hundred thousand.
Does this assume stable income from rentals?
It does, there are, you know, escalators for those, um, so uh, it's um. Some sort of inflationary increase in terms of rentals, like I said, we kind of have a capacity issue at the rack, so. Um, it's really based on slight increase to rental fees, um, but we have to be mindful there too, we're competing with other recreational activities out there, so that's a challenge as well, so. Um, like I said, you know, from the operation side uh, through twenty thirty-one, we could sustain that through. The continued subsidies from the general fund and other one-time sources as well as what we do have in the rack fund. Um, I will point out that, you know, when we we talk about the the PFD reserve. Um, you know, I think that looking forward, we would sustain the operation, so if we had to, we would use the sum of that four million to continue the operation, to continue to maintain the rack, so. But that will be a challenge too, in terms of thinking about what types of life cycle replacements we need to make and considerations for any sort of expansion into phase three, so. Um, we certainly have some time, and you know, the council's been very supportive, so they want to recognize that and and to be able to buy us this time to really. Have those discussions about the PFD future development, developments of the rack.
And there's no doubt that we will, we will go after the next fifteen years of the PFD and the next phase of the rack will be interesting to see. What the actual capital cost will be and the ongoing operation and maintenance once phase three is done. And then look at this, right, um, because obviously this is showing this deficit, if we don't take. Any additional monies out of the PFD funds, but in reality, we have this covered under our current revenues that we have in the bank, um, but we need to. Look at the next phase, um, do we, do we have any um, conceptual ideas of what we're gonna add on on phase three?
So um, we have some older concepts, but we need to update that, so just as a tentative timeline. Um, we'd like to have like mid-year, next year have a concept complete. And then the uh, the goal would be the following year, twenty twenty-five, to have a completed design.
Are we just gonna go out to, uh, that go out to bid and? How are we gonna, how are we gonna complete that?
Um, so I would submit a budget request for like next year at this time for the twenty twenty-five budget.
Okay.
So we have a small amount right now for staff to do an updated concept, we just, we've had a couple of different factors, um.
I mean, place dive, place dive, you know, looking at possible stadium and indoor facility on that property, I mean, or is that. Still sort of the idea, or is it more fields and or we just don't don't know yet?
Um, so the most recent development, and this is actually in the the uh, parks plan, is that um. The Thurston, is it the Thurston County Little League?
Capital.
Capital, thank you.
Yeah. After they had reached out to you, I gave them your.
Yes, they reached out recently, but we also had gotten some data from them on how many fields they need, um, while we were doing the comp plan update, Sue was able to.
Yeah.
Interface with them, so, yeah, so they're losing the fields at the Port Olympia, and so, so um. Up high on our radar is, you know, youth fields, fields that can be used, so I mean, there's the potential of. Adding four or five fields, just like the baseball complex that's at the rack right now, that is the facility that we turn away people the most on. Um, so it's a matter of seeing like how many fields we could actually fit over on that site with, you know, preserving the natural areas as well.
Could be some good partnership opportunities.
As well.
Too with with capital little league, cuz there's um, if they have a facility, there's some significant grant funding available for them through M L B. Like significant.
So we actually, uh, soon I have a meeting with them uh, next week.
Yeah, cuz I I don't know if you've been out to, anyone's been out to their fields, or my my grandson plays baseball out there, and man, those fields are rough. They they're nothing like.
They're horrible, they're horrible.
They're horrific, they really are. And and it's all volunteer and they have no money.
Yeah.
And there's also a huge need for fast pitch, you know, youth fast pitch as well, um, just talking to the local um, tournament directors and. You know, people who run the leagues, um, so yeah, so that's a huge theme is youth, you know, baseball and fast pitch fields. Um, but there are, there are a lot of needs, so it's it's just that great, it's the great balancing act that always is.
And we've been talking about forever, you know, having a a actual baseball stadium in this area too, I know we've talked about the partnership with uh, Saint Martin's on that, but I mean. Who knows where that's gonna go, but um, you know, uh, it'd be interesting to see what, how you could fit all that in.
Well, it's gonna be up to, you know, Jen and her team to look at that, the design concept over the next uh, um, you know, six, eight months, and then set us up for this budgeting for twenty twenty-five.
How many acres is that property?
Uh, twenty, just under twenty-six.
That's like a third of the size.
Five point nine.
Yeah, and on the other side is. The original size is how many acres, what's on the right right now?
Oh, currently, uh, sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, I thought it was bigger than that, but yeah.
It looks bigger because it you have some private property between it and uh, was it Pacific Avenue?
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Ours, it's in the back part of.
Oh, then there's the four, there's also the, it's almost a hundred altogether, but cuz the sixty-eight doesn't include. Part of the near the parking area.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
So the phase three property is is basically, um, you know, the on the north side of that area, front still come.
Yep.
The property is too much uh, Pacific on the south side is privately owned, it's a trade property.
But yeah, if you look on a map, I mean, it's gotta be close to a hundred acres there.
Yeah, together.
Yeah.
The trade property goes back to oh, into the roundabout there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's just under.
Okay.
Um, I think that was it, I think the last slide just those questions, thank you, so, um, if the council. Accepts this to move on to the next week's agenda, we'll make sure that.
You know, motion or just kind of a thumbs up.
Yeah, just have any questions, get all your questions answered, then we'll be scheduled for action to adopt, for the council adopt the financial plan next week.
Sounds good, I mean, obviously, the big one is looking at next phase of the rack as soon as we possibly can, I mean, that's a big, big, big deal, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. Then our last agenda item before we all fall asleep is the land use hearings examiner.
Still on top of my projection.
Yeah, I I told you, eight thirty, we start against that.
Only hearing participating, you haven't lost anyone.
Go for it, Grant. Good evening, council, thank you, um, and for sticking with it, and uh, before you tonight is just a uh. Briefing on a item out of the land use committee, so um. Last year, when we were looking at the hearing examiner code to consider redoing the quasi judicial process. Uh, throughout through that, we found a lot of housekeeping and updates that needed to be made to bring the code up to kind of current practices and out of nineteen seventy-nine. When we actually shared a hearing examiner with the other jurisdictions and in the county, and that language is still in there, along with the a bunch of other. Uh, language, so at the land use, we so we put together a proposal to to clean up that language and uh, bring it up to today's standards. Uh, and reviewed it with the land use committee at their June twenty-seventh meeting, uh, generally, uh, it's a, we revise. Uh, we're proposing to revise uh, broad code and ordinance citations to be specific to the Lacey municipal code. Updating the appointment process, um, by deleting reference of a joint hearing seminar. Uh, remove language related to application submittal processes and review procedures that are redundant. Uh, and or conflict with the city's procedural codes, update language related to notice of decisions, which have got snail mail still. Remove outdated provisions, uh, regard coordinating, requiring coordination with the planning commission, that which is no longer the role of the planning commission. Uh, again, we reviewed those changes with the land use committee on June twenty-seventh, uh, that committee unanimously recommended forwarding the proposed amendments to the full council for consideration. The city manager noted uh, that the matter would be scheduled for a brief update at a work session, uh, my update's brief, the rest of the items weren't. Um, to ensure that the full council is aware of the uh, scope of the amendments and to discuss other issues as well, and that brings us to tonight's meeting. So the uh, options as outlined in the in the staff report are to request staffs uh, to proceed with the uh, amendments as proposed. Um, and at that point, the city attorney would prepare an audience for consideration of the future council meeting. Uh, the council could also give direction to not move forward with amendments, leaving the current code in place, I personally would not recommend that option. Uh, another option, uh, excuse me, finally, it's always an option for the council to provide direction other than those identified uh, by staff. Um, and uh, you could also consider uh, to provide us direction on other elements to consider regarding uh, amending the the code chapter. Uh, outside the proposed amendments, and with that, as always, I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Sure, any questions, what what's the the biggest difference between the updated and the old, the old?
Uh, the updated reflects how the process actually works.
Yeah. But is it, is it, isn't there some changes on how we um, do our hearings, how we hire our hearing examiner or something like that?
Yes, the um.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, the appointment process is updated a little bit, uh, to include kind of our R F P process as needed. And then uh, uh, some, I believe we put in some, some things that we'd be looking for.
Yeah, update qualifications, the old process was, as as Grant mentioned, um, uh, the hearing examiner would be a uh. Pointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council after receipt of recognition from a joint hearings and recommission established by the interlocal agreement, the original.
Yeah, yeah.
But just that we go through our own R F P process to uh, for the uh, uh, the mayor to recommend and the council to appoint that that hearing examiner piece.
Yeah, correct.
What's that for corrections made, then we'll go out and look at updating our contracts with our current hearing examiner services.
Okay.
Updated, I mean, it clearly outdated since we haven't done it that way for. At least as long as I've been on council, we've always had our own hearings examiner, probably a lot longer than that, so I mean, maybe. Would make no sense to take no action, I think obviously you need to.
Oh, yeah.
Make the updates.
Absolutely, absolutely, I just, uh, I mean, I'm trying to remember the last time we made any changes to our hearing examiner.
Well, our current contract has been kind of on that rolling renewal process, and uh, it has come up that we do need to go back out and update that.
Yeah.
Conversations, I some, you know, a couple, maybe two or three years ago, there was a question asked about, you know, having uh. A opportunity to review that and and for.
Do we have a legal obligation to do competitive contracting?
Yes, we would, we would have to go out for a request for proposals or qualifications.
Qualifications, yeah.
Um, and go through that process, we've had the the uh, uh, evolution of the same hearing examiner, it started out with South Sound Hearing Examiner Services, and as over time, the partnerships changed, but we've had a consistent hearing examiner. Uh, since that time.
Yeah.
Not since I've been here since ninety-nine.
Yeah. Okay, so any questions, yeah?
I mean, I know that most of what Grant has in front of us tonight is housekeeping, but I'd like to. Take an opportunity, if we're going to update L M C two thirty anyway, that we talk a little bit about some of the previously proposed changes that were included in ordinance sixteen twenty-nine. Back in November, which have to do with the way that the hearing examiner makes decisions. I would like for us to continue talking about that, maybe we don't dig deep into it tonight, cuz it's eight thirty, but. I still have an interest in discussing separating quasi judicial and legislative processes.
Okay, well, um, I think for now, let's go ahead and make these changes, and um, we can schedule for a future work session to go to go over again, I mean. We've we've, we have talked about this uh, in my time, eight year, eight times.
I'd say it's been several times.
For the council, multiple council, probably seven times since about.
I was, I was, I was pretty close.
One time before.
We could get it done this time.
So anyway, I'm.
I know, just always made the decision up to game.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Made a decision every time.
Yeah, so so let's let's go forward with these uh, updates, um, and uh, talk about the whole council uh, next week for these amendments, and then. Um, if there's consensus, we can talk again about the quadrature judicial setting. You know, that's what we wanna do.
I'm for it, yeah, I think we definitely should, we certainly had a split council on it before, so.
It's pretty much split this entire time.
We talked it to death.
Yeah, so.
Looking for another option, it doesn't exist.
An option that does not exist, yeah.
Cuz all the options we never have one, always happen.
Yeah, I agree, okay, well then, um, let's move forward with these amendments, and then um, we can. Talk about a future work session for.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll work with the council and figure out, uh, wouldn't be a good time to.
No hurry.
End that conversation up and then. It'd also be, also, again, it might be in in concert with maybe some, again, um, refreshing treatment on quad judicial processes, the whole appearance first doctrine, all those different pieces, so we make sure we keep current. That's that's the biggest challenge with this, right, is is you have a, it always comes up at the moment of a land use issue, and you have the public trying to get access to talk to their like representatives. There's always those dynamics about what constitutes that conflict or that appearance or occurrence, and so we can always do that reflection training and revisit that and that way to talk about the status.
Yep. Okay, well, with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. Okay, well, with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. Thank you guys for all hanging in there, um, and without objections, I'll call this work session.